Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Day of Alodion Voice Paradeum, Ante Carl Marotta. The acronym is AMPAC and the Chief Judge of Constable Court. Today is Class 79, Class 79. What did we learn in Class 78? Well, we learned a lot about the word, what? Principles, right? We really took a deep dive into the word principles. And we learned that principles is all about your mental stability, right? Your own mental health, your own mental understanding of the truth of self, right? But what did we learn about principles in terms of law? Principles is all about setting up what? The laws, the rules, and the procedures as it relates to dealing with legal disputes, right? But we also learn about the word proverbs. Understanding that proverbs, right, about forward motion, but proverbs talked about the principle thing. But the word principle in proverbs is spelled with P-A-L on the end. Where it is when we look at principles with L-E-S on the end, right, as a suffix, we recognize principal is about you, the peak of you, understanding you. And principles is about understanding laws and understanding the integrity of those laws, right? Enforcing those laws upon yourself, then ensuring that others maintain their enabled and unallegable rights as well. We're all in this together, right, to uphold our own integrity of the state, right? What else did we learn about Class 78? Well, we learned a lot in Class 78, but we also learned a lot between Classes 78 and 79. Well, what happened between Classes 78 and 79 today being Class 79? Well, unfortunately, AMPAC experienced in real time a coup d'etat, right? So what I want all the wars to understand is this. As we start to get into restoring our modern Moroccan states, these type of things are going to happen. We must learn from these experiences. We must understand that at our varying stages of advancement, there is going to come times where we have to have what's called adversities, right? And during that adversity, we have to understand that we're not going to always agree upon things. But you can be disagreeable without being confrontational, right? But once you become confrontational, that means you're working outside of the law. You immediately become an outlaw where you don't maintain what's called due process of law. And what's due process of law? Following the norms of the Constitution? Understanding ethics, understanding policies and procedures, understanding that things should get done in an organized, dual society fashion, right? When you understand your obligations to your office, your office requires you to negotiate on behalf of the state. But who are you really negotiating for? You're negotiating for two people. Who is that? The nationals of the state. When you're in the office of the state, you're negotiating for the nationals, and you're also negotiating for the Constitution itself, right? The Constitution, right? We got AMPAC Constitution up here as an example. The Constitution is what you call her. She. She is the moral authority on behalf of all of us. She is the mother. She is the mother. And she has set forth certain provisions that way all of us can come together in an organized, dual society to deal with any type of confrontation that we have. But we must do it as diplomats. We must do it as politicians of the state. Our job is to sit down and have what's called effective communication. And when you have a lack of effective communication, that creates what after that? Frustration, right? And after you have frustration, those people show a demonstration that sometimes find themselves in lower self, all because we don't know how to effectively communicate and articulate what we're trying to say or bring to the table. So yes, AMPAC experienced a coup d'etat, right? So we'll talk about that a little bit more today because all the other Moore states at some point or another, you will experience a coup d'etat as well. It just is what it is. As an example, the United States International Organization dealt with a coup d'etat on January 6th, 2021, right? Their so-called Capitol got overrun. It was an insurrection, right? And now they're dealing with it after the fact. These things happen in time and history. So none of the Moore states will be immune from a coup d'etat. None of the Moore states will be immune from any type of rebellion or overthrow of the government. These things are going to happen. But the question is, is why? Why is this going to happen? Why will it happen? It's not if, it's a matter of when and what's happening. I'll tell you what's happening. This is the reality of what we're dealing with. First, we have to get an understanding of what a coup d'etat is, right? Let's just get the basic understanding, then we're diving into a little bit deeper, just a little bit deeper, okay? We had a good brother speaks, go ahead and read.
Coup d'etat. Now, a sudden violent and unlawful seizure of power from a government, a coup, a military coup d'etat brought down the government. Synonyms, seizure of power, coup, overthrow, takeover, ousting, disposition, regime change, rebellion, revolt, insurrection, mutiny, insurgence, insurgency.
Okay, so the most important thing to understand here, Moors, as it relates to a coup d'etat. It is a sudden, swift, sometimes violent. But what's the most important thing here? It's unlawful seizure. That means whoever is performing a coup d'etat is doing something illegal. It's unlawful. That means whoever is performing a coup d'etat does not care about the Constitution at that moment. It's all about their own self-gratification, whether it's one individual or a group of individuals, right? It's unlawful. It's an unlawful seizure of power from a government, a coup, right? What else? Brother speaks.
A coup d'etat is French for a stroke of the state. Also known as a coup or overthrow is a seizure and removal of government and its powers. Typically, it is an illegal seizure of power by a political faction, politician, cult, rebel group, military, or dictator. Many scholars consider a coup a successful when a usurper sees and holds power for at least seven days.
All right. So a coup d'etat is like a stroke, right? It's a stroke of the state, right? When you have a stroke, it's a cardiac arrest, right? It shocks you, right? So whenever this happens, Moors, you cannot pay. All the Moors, the de jour Moors, the honorable Moors of the state have to come back into a collective, right? You have to seek help. And how do you help? You go back to the provisions of the Constitution, right? The Constitution will tell you how to restore your state. You don't worry about the bad actors. You get back into conformity, the oath that you took to the Constitution, and you perform based upon the oath that you took, okay? So you don't worry about the cardiac arrest of the state. You remove those people, all right? We'll talk a little bit more about that, all right? So what's happening here with the coup d'etat? It's a stroke of the state, also known as a coup or overthrow, is a seizure and removal of a government and its powers. Typically, it is an illegal seizure of power by a political faction, politician, cult, rebel group, military, or dictator. Many scholars consider a coup successful when the usurper sees and holds power for at least seven days. What's the most important thing we need to understand about a coup d'etat? It is something that's happening from domestic terrorists. It's not foreigners doing this. It's your own. That's the most important thing we have to understand about a coup d'etat. It's your own are trying to overthrow the government, right? So what we have to understand here is our own people are trying to usurp us, trying to seize power. It's very important to understand, okay? Now, it says right here that these scholars consider a coup a coup successful when a usurper sees and holds power for at least seven days. Seven days in a week, right? Seven days in a month, seven days in a year. The seven, see how that circle seven keeps coming back into play, right? So if the usurpers hold that power unlawfully, illegally, for at least seven days, and that's officially a coup d'etat. Because sometimes it can be suppressed in one day, right? Take it, take for instance, for example, the United States dealt with a coup d'etat. It attempted rebellion when, January 6th, 2021. It only lasted a few hours, then it would stop, right? So they attempted, but it failed in that same day. Well, AMPAC experienced a coup d'etat that lasted about six, seven days. So it happened on November 6th, okay, 2022. And then by November 12th, we put an end to it. So seven days later, we as a state of emergency removed the bad actors, immediately went into elections to replace those bad actors' positions in the government. So we replaced our Seawar House Speaker of the House. We replaced the Wazir, which is the Prime Minister of the executive branch, right? And we appointed several positions that way we can move the government forward, all right? But the most important thing to understand about a coup d'etat is that it's something happening by our own people trying to overthrow us. The colonists didn't do this. It was our own, all right? Take it, brother. Let's go ahead and read this.
The cause and effect, i.e. the problem and solution. A state of emergency is a situation in which a government is empowered to be able to put through policies that it would normally not be permitted to do for the safety and protection of its nationals. A government can declare such a state during a natural disaster, civil unrest, armed conflict, medical pandemic or epidemic, or other biosecurity risks. Justidum is equivalent in Roman law, a concept in which the Roman Senate can put forward a final decree. Senatus consultum ultium, ultimo, excuse me, that was not subject to dispute yet, helped save lives in times of strife. See AMPAC Government, new YouTube channel, and the State of Emergency Proclamation.
All right, thank you, brother speaks. So what's happening? So now we're talking about the cause and effect, i.e. the problem and solution. You see, Moors, you can't worry about the problem. You must immediately start focusing in on the solution. And where do you find the solution? In your Constitution. Your Constitution says you must replace those offices immediately in order for the government to move forward. You cannot move forward without those government officials sitting in the seats, right? So based upon what's called a state of emergency. A state of emergency is a situation in which a government is empowered to be able to put through policies that it would normally not be permitted to do for the safety and protection of its nationals. A government can declare such a state during natural disaster, civil unrest, armed conflict, medical pandemic, or epidemic, or other biosecurity risk, right? So that's what AMPAC did. AMPAC was dealing with what? A civil unrest and overthrow by other government officials. So because of that, it immediately caused a state of emergency. And through the state of emergency, the AMPAC de jour and honorable officers did what next? Under state of emergency, it is a situation in which a government is empowered. So we were empowered immediately to be able to put through policies that it would normally not be permitted to do for the safety and protection of its nationals. Everything is about what? Peace and security when it comes to international law. That's the same concept we must have when we have our own Moore states. We have to get back to peace and security on behalf of who? The Constitution and the nationals. That's the obligation of the officers. The officers have to be cognizant and aware that everything we do is on behalf of our nationals who can't fend for themselves. Why? Because they don't control the pen. The officers control the pen. And we must rein in the order quickly. So during a state of emergency, and I say this to all the Moore states, we have to understand that you must move quickly. There's no time for arguments. You have to move on and restore the dignity of the state. You have to restore the integrity of domains. And you do that with a pen, all right? So down here, I put in here, see AMPAC Government. That's our new YouTube website, excuse me, our new YouTube channel, okay? AMPAC Government, type that in YouTube, all right? And then go take a look at the State of Emergency Proclamation. In addition to that, you will see our Emergency Public Inauguration, all right? That's what Moors have to learn from this. This is a learning lesson for all the Moors because you will experience this, okay? So go and take a look at those two videos, okay? It's very important, Moors. You need to add it to your library because this will happen to you as well. Now let me tell you something for the record. This is AMPAC's second time dealing with this. That's right. Things have not been all peaches and cream at AMPAC. AMPAC dealt with something similar like this around April, May of 2022. Now, it wasn't a coup d'etat, but we did have a handful of officers who were trying to undermine the Constitution, to have interpretations of the Constitution, allow them to hold on to some powers. But the Constitution prevailed, and we were able to suppress those particular Moors who was holding offices to keep them from moving forward and trying to be a belligerent. The Constitution has always prevailed. The Constitution is undefeated at AMPAC. So this is the second time we've dealt with it now in November 2022. In the same year, we've had two times where officers of the state have tried to undermine the Constitution. Why that is, I don't know, but we'll talk about a little bit more today, all right? That must be understood more. So if this has happened to AMPAC twice, that means that more than likely it's going to happen to your state as well, okay? So all the Moors out there, we have to learn how to work together. But when you start seeing tendencies in other elected officials or appointed officials, you have to now circle the wagons. You need to effectively communicate with each other. You need to put together committees and talk about the ethics, the ethical things that you already foresee. We're all adults, right? Everybody's adult now. We know bad behavior when we see it. We see things that you can almost predict that that person right there is probably a ticking time bomb. So don't allow it to fester and then blow up. The problem is with Moors right now at this stage of the game and our varying stage of advancement is this. We all love each other so much that we're letting a lot of stuff slide just because we're so excited just to get the stakes going. But once we have officers in place, the officers have taken an oath to the Constitution. Not to each other, to the Constitution. The Constitution is the law, and no one is above the law. If you don't know how to effectively communicate with your fellow constituent, then maybe you should step down. But whatever you do, don't get in the way. You either learn how to lead, follow, or get out the way. That is the truth, all right? So what's the problem we're dealing with right now, Moors? I'm going to spend a little bit of time on this. It's very important because this is a part of statehood. This is a statehood educational class, okay? Now, keep in mind, we started talking about the United Nations Charter in Classes 76, 77, 78, right? United Nations Charter. But today, we got to talk about coup d'etat, we got to talk about state of emergency. This is a part of statehood. This is what the Charter is all about. The Charter is about peace and security because these civil unrests will happen from time to, from time to time by domestic terrorists and from time to time by what? Foreign terrorists, right? So we got to get into this, Moors. Let's talk about it. It's a good time to talk about it. So what's our problem? That's the problem. This is the problem. This is the quintessential image of a person that's what you call compulsory narcissist personality disorder. In the movie Django, Steven, last name Candy, because he was what? A slave on Candyland. So his last name is the last name of the slave master. So Steven Candy was mad at who? Django, when he rode up on his horse. And what did he say? He said, "Who's that negro on that neck?" What did he keep asking Candy, Mr. Candy, the slave master? As soon as Steven came out, he was pissed off because he saw another Moore on a horse dressed to the teeth, dressed to the nines. And Steven Candy was upset. But let me put you in a proper context, all right, and concept. Do you remember in the movie Django? That Django said to the German dentist, he said, "So you want me to pretend to be a slaver? That I'm enslaving my own people?" Said, "Well, we have a plan to go and rescue who?" His wife, right? Remember Django wanted to rescue his wife, right? What was her name? Brumhilde? I think it's Brumhilde, right? But in wanting to rescue Brumhilde, Jamie Foxx had to pretend to be what? When he put on that blue suit, he had to pretend like he himself was a slaver. And Jamie Foxx acting as Django said, "The slaves hate an African slaver more than they hate the slave master." Isn't that what he said? So if Django knew that, guess who else knew that? Steven Candy. So when Django pulled up on the horse, immediately Steven knew the status of Django. He says, "Oh, that dude's ruthless like me." But even though Steven Candy knew that Django was supposed to be a ruthless slaver, he still hated Django nonetheless. That goes to show you how narcissist he was that he hated even sharing any spotlight with any other negro, even that negro was in a status that was even worse to him because he was the house negro. Django was playing an African slaver, which is a higher status than even Steven Candy. And Steven still hated Django, even though Django was basically on the same level as Steven Candy. Steven hated all negroes if anybody was going to stand side by side or above him. Regardless, Django was a slaver. He was playing that part. Keep that in mind. What else do we have to keep in mind? Sheba. Sheba was the unofficial wife of who? Calvin Candy. Who was Calvin Candy? Lionel DiCarlo. What's his name? Caprio, right? This dude. So Sheba, Candy, Sheba Candy, and Steven Candy. were working for Calvin Candy on the slave plantation. You must understand, Moors, our own people are kind of going to do everything they can on behalf of the Calvin Kanes. And even when people like Steven Candy sees another slaver such as Django, Django was playing an African slaver, he still hated him, even though Calvin Candy, listen, listen, Calvin Candy had no problem with Django. But guess who had a problem with Django? This dude. Our biggest problem we're going to have as Moors as we start to restore our states is each other because we're already on the inside. See, we got our eyes on the colonists, but the reality is we got to keep our eyes on each other too through the Constitution. But people like Steven Candy will reveal themselves real fast to you within days, weeks, and months. They will reveal themselves and trust them. When they reveal themselves, believe them of who they are, even if they got on the feds. Now watch this. Now Calvin Candy of Candyland. You remember the part he had the skull sitting here? Why the heck was Calvin Candy holding on to a skull? You know why he held on to it? He said that this Moore, who was just like Steven Candy, took care, took care of his Papa. And this Moore's head right here was an H-N-I-C, Head Negro in Charge. So he's saving this hate because this is who is really running the plantation. Not the Candy family, but the Steven Candies and the Sheba Candy is running the plantation. So they, he paid homage to this man. Hey, H-N-I-C. Now look what it's sitting on, a red type of platform. It's red. What does that represent? The Moors. The Moors, that red represents our flag. And the Moors have been keeping other Moors in check on behalf of the colonists. And they know that the Moors have more power to keep us in check than the colonists do. Calvin Candy didn't know what the heck was going on in the plantation. Steven did, right? This dude was running the whole show, not Calvin Candy. So therefore, that's why he's holding on to his head because he is a reminder that the Moors are controlling other Moors. But this is what you call negative law, sellout Moore, coin tell pro, conversal Moore that's put on a pedestal by the Calvin Kanes. But guess who else needs these, this Moore, right? And this Moore to keep doing their job, to keep oppressing and suppressing other Moors? Guess who else needs you to do it? This dude. J.P. Morgan and the like, i.e. Jacob. Jacob the Bankers. Jacob the Bankers have a middleman protecting him. Who's the middleman protecting Jacob? Who's the middleman protecting J.P. Morgan, who's overseeing the entire monopoly? You know who's protecting it? The middleman is Calvin Candy. And then Calvin Candy turns around and hires who? Moors to run the whole plantation. This dude. And the Steven Candies do a better job than Calvin Candy. Steven Candy will do a better job than J.P. Morgan because the Steven Candies have a compulsory narcissistic personality disorder. He hated Django, and Django never did nothing to him. If anything, he should have saw Django as what? His equal. But he didn't see Django as his equal. He saw Django as his competition for no reason whatsoever, even though Calvin Candy liked Django. Why? Because Calvin Candy is all about business. Calvin Candy was about his money. He wasn't taking things personal. Soon as they started talking about money, what did Calvin Candy turn around and say? "Oh, now you got my undivided attention. Keep talking." All of a sudden now, he didn't see color. He saw money. This guy only cares about money. This guy doesn't discriminate. Neither does this guy. He don't discriminate. You remember when he was messing around with the slave that they let the German shepherds rip up? What was he talking about to the slave? Money. He said, "Man, I paid $500 for you. I need five fights. I got to get my money back." It's only about money for them? Okay, then what's in it for him? Because he ain't getting the money. He just getting privileges. It's all personal. It ain't business. It's personal. And that's what makes people who are having what's called compulsory narcissist personality disorders dangerous. Because he didn't care about what his own Cause he didn't care about what his own boss told him. His boss told him, leave Django alone. What else happened? Listen, we're talking about coup d'etat, we're talking about domestic terrorists. The German dentist got involved with Django and freed him in the movie. Well, why did he free Django? Cause he was about his money. He was looking for some other guys that had a warrant, right? He was a bounty hunter. Only reason why he even got into a contract with Django, it was about money, nothing personal. And then Django had a personal vendetta. He wanted to go save his wife. It was personal for Django to save his wife. But the German turned around and said, you know what? Even though we have a contract, remember the contract this time? Once Django fulfilled that contract, the German said, you know what? I'm gonna help you with that personal problem you got. Why? It was, it was a humanitarian thing for him at that point. So not all people that look like the German dentist is bad people. Remember what I told you? A colonist is not a face, it's an action. So there's gonna be plenty of Europeans that's gonna help honorable Moors. He literally gave this man this long armed rifle to do what? Deliver justice based upon warrant. This man, the German dentist, allowed Django to shoot someone who was warranted, I mean wanted. Based upon justice. It wasn't personal, it was business. But they still partnered up. And in the end, listen. The German dentist literally, literally sacrificed himself to help Django and his wife, Broomhilda, to get together towards the end of the movie. So you must understand the word colonist has no face, it's an action. Because the dentist German helped these Moors to get their freedom, at least temporarily. This dude and this woman is who we all have to look out for. It ain't got nothing to do with gender, it's an action. Cause Sheba was down with anything that Stephen was down with. We all have to work together. But unfortunately, there's a narcissist born every day and we gonna have to deal with them. And we gonna have to stick together and deal with these narcissists cause they're not gonna go away. But they will not prevail. Now let me say something very important for you. The German dentist. The German dentist is almost like the United Nations Charter members. There's, there's a lot of European states that signed on to Resolution fifteen fourteen of the year nineteen sixty to allow indigenous people to get their land back. Stop looking at people's prima facie. Look at their characteristics of what they're trying to do to help you to uplift fallen humanity. We're all gonna need each other at the end of the day. Moors and Europeans gonna have to come back together. Sadi Mohammed brought us together. Through the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, he allowed the colonists to stay here and the colonists were what? A melting pot of who? British Moors, another pale-faced Europeans, right? We gotta get back to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship as a collective because this brother ended up assassinating, killing Calvin Candy in the end of the movie, right? He sacrificed himself. He knew he was gonna get killed. He said, I can't help it, I'm sorry, I gotta take this one out. And he shot Calvin Candy after giving him the background on the Three Musketeers. So you have to understand something. Stop looking at people's prima facie and look at their actions. And you have to move swiftly when you're dealing with this particular type of prima facie. It will reveal itself quickly to you. You'll see it. Don't ignore it. The end of the movie seems nice, right? They ride off in a sunset. But not really. They became fugitives. Why? This is why. They did not return to Morocco to pledge their allegiance to a Moroccan state government in order for them to be on the protected persons list according to the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, Article eight. If the Moors don't have constitutions, we will forever be fugitives. We will always be in a status of thinking that we're happy because we're together, but we're just Moors subjects. Hoping for freedom and civil rights. These two are Moors subjects according to treaties. But guess who was a protege according to the treaties? He was a protege working for who? Calvin Candy. He was a protected Moore. Guess who else was a protege? Sheba. She was protected. She was on the protected persons list. She was on Calvin Candy's list. She was on J P Morgan's list. Doing the works on behalf of the bankers and the slave masters. These are proteges. Moors subjects who are not protected. But at some point, the Moors subjects, as well as who? The proteges have to return to Morocco at some point. And they will, they will be adjudged for what they've done to other Moors. I need y'all to remember this image. Because even though they feel safe in this moment, cause this is like towards the end of the movie, et cetera. They still wasn't safe, cause they, they still aware of the jurisdiction of the United States. They still in the jurisdiction of the United States of America. Isn't that the last word that Stephen Candy said to them? He said, oh, they gonna get y'all. They gonna kill you, Django for what you done here today. You gonna be on them wanted posters. Isn't that what he told Django before he died? Why? Because Django and Broomhilda are still citizens of the United States. That must be understood. What is my point here? We can learn a lot from the movie Django. But we can also learn in real time about the coup d'etat and the rebellions and the insurrections that happened to Moors states. And who's doing it? Our own. So we start to get in the charter. The Charter of the United Nations of nineteen forty-five is about state rights. What about state rights? Well, one of the rights is state rights against enemies both foreign and domestic. Cause you got foreign terrorists and you got domestic terrorists. The United States deals with this a lot. Even though they're an international organization. But how does we as Moors deal with this? What I need the Moors to do is go look up and see what the United States did. They enacted what's called a Smith Act of nineteen forty. Smith Act of nineteen forty. Look it up. What else? Go look up the Anti-Terrorism and Death Penalty Act of nineteen ninety-six. The Anti-Terrorism and Death Penalty Act of nineteen ninety-six. What is that about? That's about anybody who's acting as a foreign or domestic terrorist. The United States has enacted policies. They can give you the death penalty. What point am I making? Moors should look that information up. Download that PDF. Read it. And you know what we do next? We convert it into Moroccan law. Take out the words United States of America and replace it with your state name. Now wait, anybody both foreign and domestic that tries to overthrow your state, they already know their veins. That's gonna be considered what? Anti-Terrorism and Death Penalty Act of a Moors states act. That should be the legislation. We have to learn from our mistakes. Every time we have a problem, we should have a solution. And as we continue to experience problems, we have to enact legislation to know how to deal with it next time. Much faster, more efficiently. Because the Calvin Candys, the Sheba Candys, and the Stephen Candys of the world are not gonna go away. They will always be amongst us. And as long as they know that we have an Anti-Terrorism and Death Penalty Act on the record of our state, and after that, you just have to let the legislation play out and give them their due process of law. In class seventy-eight, we're going over the definition of principle. Principle is a fundamental truth or doctrine as a law. A comprehensive rule or doctrine which furnishes a basis or origin for others, et cetera, rule of action. Procedure or legal determination. A truth or proposition so clear that it cannot be proved or contradicted unless by a proposition which is still clearer. Right? Principle. Principle's about truth. We must all be grounded in truth. And one of the truths that all of us know as adults, we know ourselves. You know whether you're a villain or you know if you're a hero, superhero. No one's gotta tell you, you know who you are. You look at yourself in the mirror every day. You know if you like helping people or do you like getting over on people? You know who you are. So for those Moors out there, you already know your tendencies is to be a villain, don't put your name in the hat to be an officer of the state. Don't put your name in the hat to be an appointed officer of the state. You should just lay back and allow others to be leaders, cause it's just a matter of time before your villain tendencies appear and the state's gonna deal with you through due process of law. And as the good brother Ice Cube said, you better check yourself before you wreck yourself. Cause I'm bad for your health. I move with stealth. Cause this pen gonna put an end to sellout Moors and their friends. That must be understood. Okay, let's continue. Okay. We're going over the Charter of the United Nations and the Statute of the International Court of Justice. We had started already reading over the preamble. We had a basic understanding of what the preamble's about, it's about human rights. Then we took the time to break down the definition of principles, right? Spent an entire class over the definition of principles. So we'll go ahead and start the reading today. That way we can continue on with something way more positive, something a little bit more upbeat. But from time to time, we're gonna have to stop and pause and deal with things that as the Moors call lower self type of activities. Then we gotta get back to higher self because these are the solutions. Right? We all must always talk about solutions, alright? Okay, good brother speaks. Let's go ahead and start with chapter one, okay?
Chapter one, Purposes and Principles, Article one. The purposes of the United Nations are, one, to maintain international peace and security and to that end, to take effective collective measures for the prevention and removal of threats to the peace and for the suppression of acts of aggression or other breaches of the peace and to bring about, by peaceful means and in conformity with the principles of justice and international law, adjustment or settlement of international disputes or situations which might lead to a breach of the peace.
Alright, thank you, good brother. This is exactly what Anpact just experienced, right? We had a breach of peace. Well, how do you deal with a breach of peace? You deal with it in a peaceful way. You deal with, with diplomacy. You pick up your pen and get to work and you move on. Sometimes you gotta, if you get a flat tire, you just change the tire, you move on. Sometimes you literally just gotta take out the trash, put the trash on the side of the road. Let it get picked up and you never see it again. Gotta move on to the next week. It's trash day every week. Take it from the top. Article one, the purposes of the United Nations are to maintain international peace and security and to that end, to take effective collective measures for the provision and removal of threats to the peace and for the suppression of acts of aggression or other breaches of the peace. And to bring about, by peaceful means and in conformity with the principles of justice and international law, adjustment or settlement of international disputes or situations which might lead to a breach of the peace. We gotta maintain peace, Moors. Let's continue, good brother speaks.
Two, to develop friendly relations among nations based on respect for the principles of equal rights and self-determination of peoples and to take other appropriate measures to strengthen universal peace.
Pause. Okay, number two, to develop friendly relations among nations based on respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples. And to take other appropriate measures to strengthen universal peace. So the United Nations Charter is all about the principle of equal rights and self-determination of people. That's very important to understand, Moors. Moors are entitled to self-determination. Well, what type of self-determination? Well, the first self-determination is what? You must know thyself. You're Moroccan. Okay, once you know you're Moroccan, what's the next step? Well, the Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, Article fifteen says what? Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country and find out he's Moroccan, has to do what next? Choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. So that means that now your self-determination, you're determined that you're Moroccan. Right? You're the Moroccan peoples, but what creates true self-determination? The state. So you can say you're Moroccan, but that means nothing out of your mouth. That's your oral argument. That's your mere expression. Who has to recognize you as being Moroccan? That's the question. The state. Nobody on planet Earth can say they're a citizen of the United States of America unless they can prove it. That's the truth. I can sit here and tell you all day, I'm Italian, I can say it, but can I prove it? No. So the state has to recognize you. The state has to give you identification that says you're Moroccan. The state has to give you identification that says you're Italian. That's the way it works on planet Earth. So when Moors say, I'm a Moore, okay, sounds good, prove it. Where's your state ID? Does the state recognize you? Yeah, I get it. You say you're Moore, prove it. That's the question of the day. You know, the United States has this thing called the federal question. You ever heard of that, the federal question? What's the federal question all about? They'll say this, if you look it up, it's about the federal question. The question is, does the federal government have jurisdiction? That's the question they're always asking, do they have jurisdiction? And you know how they know when they have jurisdiction? When you can't And you know how they know when they have jurisdiction? Well, you can't prove your own jurisdiction. How do you prove it? State ID, government credentials, constitution has been ratified, been properly promulgated in accordance to international law. When you have your consular representation on the consul notification and access. When you're now enforcing what's called the Vienna Convention on Consular Relations of nineteen sixty-three. When you got consul court to represent you as a national of your state. Then the federal question has been answered. If you can't answer the simple questions based upon statehood, then guess who has the jurisdiction? The feds of the United States International Organization by default. You acquiesce. You've consented to let them have the jurisdiction because you don't understand international law. First of all, you didn't even know that you was Moroccan. You kept saying you're American. Guess what the federal question says? They say they're Americans, the feds got jurisdiction. If they say they're Native American, feds got jurisdiction. That's the way it works. You don't realize out of your own mouth, by your own decree, you're telling them they have jurisdiction. Let's continue, good brother. Number three.
Three, to achieve international cooperation in solving international problems of an economic, social, cultural, humanitarian character and in promoting and encouraging respect for human rights and for the fundamental freedoms of all without distinction as to race, sex, language, or religion.
Alright. So keep in mind, what is the charter all about? It's about state rights. Who can become a member of the charter? Only states, not individuals. However, it's the state's obligation to protect its nationals. Because the state now is consenting to the charter and understand HR compliance on how other states deal with their disputes or how they get into diplomatic relations. So when you see right here in section three, to achieve international cooperation and solving international problems of an economic, social, cultural, or humanitarian character and in promoting and encouraging respect for human rights and for the fundamental freedoms for all without distinction as to race, sex, language, or religion. So it's the state's obligation to protect your human rights. You can't do that by yourself. The state has to enact legislation to protect your rights. Do you know what civil rights is? Civil rights doesn't protect your rights. You know what civil rights does for black people? It just writes you checks. It's a civil check. It has nothing to do with criminal. It's civil. That's why it's civil rights. It ain't criminal rights. You don't, you don't have rights against criminals. You only have rights to get a check. That's why we see all of our mothers on TV after their sons have been slain by some police officer. The mother's next steps is to get what? A check. Guess who brings the so-called criminal suit against the so-called, say, police officer as an example? Did the mother bring that suit? No. The state brought the criminal suit towards the cop. What did the mother bring? A civil suit. What did their attorneys get out of it that represents the mom? Thirty-three and a third. So the attorneys are getting millions off of civil suits. But those same attorneys, you won't see them in the criminal suit. So civil rights is only about giving a check. Ain't got nothing to do with the criminal aspect of it. The state turns around, even the corporate state, right? Let's say Missouri, right? It brought the criminal case towards a cop. Not the civil rights attorneys. NAACP don't bring no criminal suits. It's all civil for them. It's just about money. But the criminals get away unless the state brings a criminal suit. So one attorney is bringing a civil suit, the other attorney is bringing a criminal suit. You gotta understand what's happening here. The game they're playing with civil rights. You gotta go back and look at what's called the Christian Black Codes of the year seventeen twenty-four. I wanna say it's Article thirteen or something like that. In there, if you read it, it talks about the fact they'll pay out anytime a Moor has been killed. They give you a civil check. But ain't nobody going to jail back in those days. But they'll write a check. Why? Because somebody's property got neutralized, so they's paying for that property damage. So human rights for Moors, we have to enact our own legislation to protect our own nationals because ain't nobody else gonna do it for us except for us. It's about state rights to protect its nationals with human rights. Against both foreign and domestic terrorists. Let's continue.
And four, to be center of for harmonizing the actions of na- of nations in attainment of the of these common ends. Article two, the organization and its members in pursuit of the purposes stated in Article one shall act in accordance with the following principles. One, the organization is based on the principle of sovereign equality of all its members. Two, all members and members ensure to all of them the rights and benefits resulting from membership shall fulfill in good faith obligations assumed by them in accordance with the present charter. Three, all members shall settle their international disputes by peaceful means in such a manner that international peace and security and justice are not in danger. Four, all members shall refrain in their international relations from the threat or use of force against a territorial integrity or political independence of any state or in any other manner inconsistent with the pur- purposes of the United Nations. All members shall give the United Nations area assistance in any action it takes in accordance with the present charter and shall refrain from giving assistance to any state against which the United Nations is taking a preventive enforcement or enforcement action. The organization shall ensure that states which are not members of the United Nations act in accordance with these principles so far as may be necessary for the maintenance of international peace and security.
Alright, pause right there. So number six, the organization shall ensure that states which are not members of the United Nations act in accordance with these principles so far as may be necessary for the maintenance of international peace and security. You see that, Moors? So even if Moors decide not to become members of the United Nations Charter, by acquiescence, we still have to abide by these particular principles. There's nothing that says we have to be a member of United Nations Charter. However, they wrote in here, if in fact you're claiming to be a state and you're claiming to have independence as a state, then you have to abide by these HR compliance rules and regulations on how states get into diplomatic relations or how states deal with disputes in order to maintain peace and security. It has to be rules. Rules of engagement. Thank you, brother.
Seven, nothing contained in the present charter shall authorize United Nations to intervene in matters which are essential within a domestic jurisdiction of any state or shall require the members to submit such matters to settlement under the present charter. But this principle shall not pre- uh prejud- prejudice the application of enforcement measures under Charter seven.
Alright, so.
Or chapters, yeah.
Yes, chapter seven. Alright, good job, good brother. Okay, number seven. Nothing contained in the present charter shall authorize the United Nations to intervene in matters which are essentially within a domestic jurisdiction of any state or shall require the members to submit such matters to settlement under the present charter. But this principle shall not be prejudiced the application of enforcement measures under chapter seven. Okay, so what does this mean? You see, states are not allowed to get involved with the civil unrest of another state. So take for instance, if Mexico is having civil unrest, where the Moors just can't jump in and start getting in the middle of that civil unrest. That's that's between Mexico and its nationals. Even if it's a coup d'etat or rebellion going on, we have to be hands off. Right? But it has an however clause in here. However, it says, but this principle shall not be prejudiced the application of enforcement measures measures under chapter seven. So what you have to understand is if there are human rights violations going on in another state, it is the responsibility of other states to intervene to stop those human rights violations. So it's kind of a catch twenty-two type of clause here. Usually you go to the United Nations, the United Nations General Assembly comes together. And the General Assembly ma- uh members decide whether they're going to intervene into another state's civil unrest. But typically, Moors are not just gonna jump in and deal with Mexico's civil unrest without going to the United Nations and say, hey, what can we do about what's going on at our border? Right? That's how it works. It's about effective communication and following the ro- the rules of engagement. Okay? Thank you, brother.
Chapter two, membership. Article three. The original members of the United Nations shall be the states which, having participated in the United Nations Conference on international organization at San Francisco, were having previously signed the Declaration by United Nations of January first nineteen forty-two. Signed the present charter and ratified in accordance with Article one to one ten. Article four. One, membership in the in the United Nations is open to all other peace-loving states which accept the obligations contained in the present charter and in the judgment of the organization are able and willing to carry out these obligations.
Alright, let's pause right here. Article four. Membership. Membership of the United Nations is open to all other peace-loving states which accept the obligations contained in the present charter and in the judgment of the organization are able and willing to carry out these obligations. And what are the obligations? To maintain peace and security. To maintain human rights for the people. To be good neighbors to other states. Right? We have to get back to the treaties of peace and friendship. That's what it's all about. Right? So we're talking about membership here. So Moors, we'll talk about this in the future in terms of whether we're going to become members of the United Nations or not. Right? Well, we'll talk about that another day. But in the meantime, here's something I need the Moors to understand. Here, here's a list of states, right? These are member states of the United Nations, okay? You can find this online. So you come down, I think this is Wikipedia, now that I think about it. These are all the member states, right? These are the member states thus far. So over here you have an X that represents original members. So the original member will have a green checkbox. If they're not an original member, they have a red X. Okay, you'll see what I'm talking about as I scroll down. This right here is the date they became admitted as a member and this is the name of the state, okay? So as I go down this list, you can see the dates, years, they became member, name of state, and then like I said, the far right is where the member, whether they were original member or not, okay? So we start to scroll down. We see all these states. So as you can see, Argentina was one of the original members in nineteen forty-five when the charter was fully activated, right? When it came into full force, right? So as you can see, Australia was one of the original members nineteen forty-five. And a lot of states came on after that, okay? So if we scroll down, you see all these states. Okay, all these states. I just wanted to get a basic understanding of what's going on here. Okay, I'm about to make a point here in just a moment. You see Canada there nineteen forty-five. Chile, China, Colombia, all these original nineteen forty-five original members, Costa Rica. Right? Cuba. Imagine that. Cuba's on there nineteen forty-five. It's a state, got a constitution. Right? You ever wonder why the United States just didn't take Cuba? You know why they didn't take Cuba? Cause Cuba's a state, have a constitution, have the independence. If the United States ever did anything to Cuba, that would be considered what? War crimes, aggression, crimes against humanity, human rights violations, right? Genocide. That's why they don't touch Cuba. Continuing. So you see all these states, right? Okay, all these states, the green box mean they're original, Ethiopia, et cetera, France. Now you see France is on there nineteen forty-five, right? Now, we know at that time in nineteen forty-five, the treaty of Fes gave France the power to grant the charter to come into fruition, right? Without France signing off on the charter, the charter would not be in existence today. Okay? Now, it's very interesting. Remember that about France signed on in nineteen forty-five, okay? Keep that in mind. So you got all these other states, right?
Haiti is on there.
Yeah, Haiti. Yeah, Haiti nineteen forty-five. Haiti was one of the original states. Imagine that, constitution. But then Haiti said, you know what? We want our independence. We ain't messing around with your colonies no more. Now after that, they got isolated. The other colonial states such as France, United States said, we ain't gonna do trade with them. We gonna let them starve. Go look up the history, you'll see. Okay, India was one of the originals nineteen forty-five. Iran, Iraq nineteen forty-five, right? So some more states. Okay, you can look this information up. We have time. Lebanon nineteen forty-five. Liberia nineteen forty-five. Luxembourg nineteen forty-five. Okay, I'm scrolling down a little bit fa- faster. There you go, Mexico nineteen forty-five. Okay, now look at this. Morocco. Nineteen fifty-six. Well, first of all, this should not say Morocco. Cause that's not the name of the state, is it? It's the Kingdom of Morocco. But they just simply put the name on there Morocco, which is a misnomer. But what's my point here? Morocco became a member state of the United Nations in nineteen fifty-six. What else happened in nineteen fifty-six? The same year the Sultan stepped down to be king. Right? So he was no longer king anymore. He became, I mean Sultan anymore. He became king immediately. He became a member state nineteen fifty-six. But wait, the charter was enacted in nineteen forty-five. Why didn't Morocco become a member state like everybody else in nineteen forty-five? You know why they did not? Cause France was controlling the pen. And according to the Treaty of Fes of nineteen twelve, Morocco could not speak for itself. Under power turning, France was controlling the pen. France had signed on to the charter, still representing the empire of Morocco. And as soon as the Sultan was no longer Sultan, he became king, he enacted and had his Declaration of Independence in nineteen fifty-six and he immediately ran over to the charter and became a member. Same year, imagine that. Same year he went from Sultan to King, he runs over and becomes a member state. He wanted his independence. What should we learn from this? If the Sultan turned king, became a member state because he wanted independence away from who? France or colonies? Then what makes Moors think we don't have to do it as well? These are just instructions that all Moors have to follow. Cause even the Sultan turned king became a member state. Nineteen fifty-six. Eleven years after the charter was enacted, eleven years, but everybody else signed on to it in nineteen forty-five. Why didn't Morocco sign in nineteen forty-five? Cause France wouldn't let him. Cause France said, no, I got the pen. You can't do anything Sultan. Remember you signed off the treaty? France represented the empire for years. And as soon as the Sultan turned king, had his independence, he hurried up and became a member in nineteen fifty-six. And got a big old red X. Nope. Not an original member. Well, scroll on down, watch this. Okay. So you got all these other original states, okay, in green. Let's come on down here. Russia, that's Russia, right? Saudi Arabia. South Africa. More Arabian states were the originals. Turkey, you know, Turkey just changed their name recently in case the Moors didn't know that. They just changed it this year, the year twenty twenty-two. This is how they spell it now. T U R K I Y E. They changed the name on their constitution, everything. They notified the United Nations Secretary General that they changed their name as well. It's on the record. You can go to YouTube and who- and uh YouTube and you'll see more information on it. But they changed the spelling of their name from Turkey to Turket. Look it up, alright? Okay, let me get to my point.
So Ukraine?
Yeah, Ukraine, right? So, okay, let's. United States of America, right? So United States of America became a member state nineteen forty-five. Why? Because they were part of the original committee, right? The big three, they turned into big five. Right? So the allied forces. which United States was a part of the allied forces, we're talking World War One, World War Two, the allied forces was against who? The Axis Forces, the Axis Forces, right? So you have the allies. So United States of America is the name they put on the contract in nineteen forty-five. Right? Listen, because we're talking these entity names, right? So we come back over to the charter. Right? So now we come down here to the signature page. Signature page, okay, United States of America. There's United States of America's signature. All the signatory powers, right? Okay, there's France, right, signature for France. France, okay, go back up. United States, look at all these signatures, right, for the United States of America. That's the name on the contract. Right? You go back over to the list. Says, United States of America, that's the name on the contract, right? But wait a minute. Now you look at the Security Council. That's Trump at the United Nations. At the Security Council. And look at the name of the placard. President of the United States. But wait a minute. I thought there's United States of America on the contract. Well, how they get in the way with this United States placard? At the United Nations? You know how they get in the way with it? Because the Moors have acquiesced. The United Nations, all the Assembly members, right? I just showed you a list. They cannot get involved with what? A civil matter. They can't challenge, the United States said, man, y'all ain't United States, y'all United States of America. Because that would be considered a civil dispute, that only Moors can deal with it. Why do I say that? Because the Moors have a bilateral treaty with the United States of America. And since we've been quiet and we have not challenged this non-denier, this doing business as the United States, because they're the United States of America, doing business as the United States. And the only person can challenge the United States is Moroccan Moors, who have ratified and positive promulgated their constitution and then acceded to all the treaties. Then we can enforce our Moroccan legislation, our laws, our rules and procedures of civil and criminal disputes to challenge this doing business as name that they're utilizing. Listen. You see this right here? This is the case out of the International Court of Justice, okay? International Court of Justice. Okay? This is Iran versus the United States of America. Okay? This is the actual case, the judgment. Alleged violations of the nineteen fifty-five Treaty of Amity, Economic Relations and Consular Rights, Islamic Republic of Iran versus the United States of America. Order of twenty-first July twenty twenty-one. Well, wait, so when they go to the I C J, all of a sudden now they're the United States of America. Why? Because that's the name on the contract. But when they're performing in front of the Security Council, they say they're the United States. Two separate legal entities. They're not the same, United States of America is doing business as the United States. But how is it they're getting away with having this placard of the United States at the United Nations? Well, I read it to you in the United Nations Charter. Nobody else can get involved with this civil dispute. And right now, it ain't been a dispute because the Moors haven't made a proper claim to our state to have our land returned back, that way we can now start to challenge this international organization name that's pretending to be the sovereign state. Okay, let's go back to the list. You see the list, United States of America, right? Let's go back to the top, what did it say as the intro? What does it say as the intro? Watch this. It's a list of what? Sovereign states. So United States of America and the United States is pretending to be the sovereign state. Well, how is it that they're legally getting away with that? Because the Moors haven't made a proper claim for the United States of America and the United States International Organization to relinquish extraterritoriality jurisdiction in Morocco. But all the other states on planet Earth knows about this duality that's taking place between this name, the United States, and this name on the nineteen forty-five charter self-signature, United States of America. They know the difference. So when you start taking a look at that placard, you start looking at the International Court of Justice, Res Judicata, you'll see the proper name. Because the parties must be known when you go to a competent tribunal. They don't let the United States of America play that game with I C J. However, when the United States of America gets to the I C J, they refer to them in both names. But they'll put the proper name on here, but they know the United States of America does business as the United States. Okay, listen. So you got the Permanent Security Council, right? These are the five states that sit on the Permanent Security Council. You got China, you got Russia, France, United States of America, and Britain. Right? That's the Permanent Security Council, all five. Right? But do you see this? What is this about? Let's go back. Show you something. The United States of America right now is in a position of a de facto sovereign state. As soon as we restore the land back to Morocco with a competent pen through our consul court, this flag right here will be replaced. How do I know? Because that's what our treaties say. The Act of Al-Dusers gives us jurisdiction. Article one twenty-three says over jurisdictions over what? All treaties, conventions, and arrangements in Morocco. And right now, the United States of America is sitting in a position that they shouldn't be sitting in. They're sitting there as what? A power of attorney over our Moroccan state. Because they're not the sovereign. They already sit there as the sovereign in the place of the sovereign. Listen. As we start to transition, the United States of America will be absorbed by Morocco. There will be a transition going on. Why is this important to understand? Because if we start getting more to the charter of the United Nations as a sovereign state, the United States of America can no longer exist. You can't have two sovereigns claiming the same territory. But the United States of America, I already know they signed off on all the treaties to give the territory back. They already signed the contracts. The problem is the Moors haven't made a proper claim. So during our varying stage of advancement, this is what's gonna take place. The United States of America right now is sitting in the Permanent Security Council. But eventually it'd be Moors sitting there in our proper place. What place? Right here. At some point, this flag, Moroccan flag of the empire will be sitting right here, representing the empire of Morocco. Okay, see right here? This right here is the Russian flag. Before it was Russia's what? USSR, right? Russia's the new king on the block. Russia took over for the USSR. And now Russia's sitting in that chair, but it was USSR. But now Russia took that place. Same thing's gonna happen with the United States of America, when the Moors get their act together and make a proper claim. We will replace that flag, because this flag right here is a de facto sovereign. De facto means of fact, in fact, they are the sovereign. But the de jour, Moors are coming back to make a proper claim. We will replace that flag. And that flag will then get back into its proper position, which is what? Subordinated to Moroccan law. This flag will be replaced. So let's start to close out. I want you to listen to the International Court of Justice, we spent about three, about three, four minutes listening to this video. Listen closely and look at the placards. The placards that's sitting on the desk, okay? So this is the International Court of Justice video, okay? This is Iran versus the United States of America, you can find this on YouTube. This happened, this case took place in twenty twenty-one, I just showed you the judgment, right? The first page of the judgment, right? Let's go back to the judgment. Okay, this case right here. Okay? So now in real time, I want you to listen to what's happening. This is the United States of America's table right here. Iran is sitting to the right.
This is sitting. The sitting is open. The court metes today to deliver its decision on the request for the indication of provisional measures submitted by the Islamic Republic of Iran in the case concerning alleged violations of the nineteen fifty-five Treaty of Amity, Economic Relations and-
That's the United States of America.
Islamic Republic of Iran versus the United States of America. I would recall that on sixteen July twenty-
Did you hear the name he said? He said, United States of America, he called about a proper party name, okay? Let's go back.
Republic of Iran versus the United States of America. I would recall that on sixteen July twenty eighteen, the Islamic Republic of Iran filed in the registry of the court an application instituting proceedings against the United States.
Now it says United States. Did you catch it? Okay, listen.
With regard to alleged violations of the Treaty of Amity, Economic Relations and Consular Rights between Iran and the United States of America, which was signed at Tehran on fifteen August nineteen fifty-five and entered into force on sixteen June nineteen fifty-seven. I would refer to this treaty as the Treaty of Amity or the nineteen fifty-five treaty. On the same day, Iran submitted a request for the indication of provisional measures.
You see the placard? See the I C J? Their parties must be known. Whose name is on the contract? The United States of America. But the Security Council, they got a plaque that says United States. And the International Court of Justice already knows that they play off these two legal entities, right? These legal personalities. The I C J already knows this. So the I C J already knows that the United States of America in a proper vein is also utilizing the placard that says President of the United States. Not the United States of America. The I C J already knows the game is being played. So when the Moors go and make a proper claim, we're the only ones that can challenge this international organization that's pretending to be a sovereign state. Because no other state on planet Earth could get involved to stop this war machine. They've been waiting on the Moors. But what's the problem? This dude. Who else? This woman. See, it ain't about gender. It's about your actions. Because this dude at the United Nations has been trying to help Moors. But this dude has been using Moors such as Stephen to get in the way of these Moors subjects from getting their rights. But how do we stop this belligerence? I'll show you how. You enact your own constitution. You move forward with your confidence and your competence. And you start to adjudicate the belligerent Moors. You start to adjudicate the sellout Moors. It's the only way we're gonna get over this speed bump. It's the only way we're gonna get past this impediment. It's the only way we're gonna get liberation from our occupation. Because the first colonizer is Moors. Then we gotta deal with Calvin Candy. Then we deal with J P Morgan, i.e. Jacob. Because at the end of the day, who is Oz at the Wizard of Oz? Who is the Wizard of Oz? Who is the wizard? It's J P Morgan. Not Joe Biden or any other president of the United States. The president of the United States is a pawn, he's a mirror man between Moors and J P Morgan. J P Morgan, i.e. Jacob, is ruling over the little brother, or should I say big brother? Big brother's Esau. Little brother's Jacob. And who is helping Jacob? Calvin Candy, Stephen Candy, and Sheba Candy. But this is the answer to the test. We must believe in our own constitution. Because Nobu Dhaali said, I gave you everything to save a nation. Take it, save yourself. I am with that. Islam.